Good morning. It's Wednesday, March 12th, 2014. And we're in the Board of Commissioners' room, 1115 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem, for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, they say it's going to be the warmest day of the year so far. Spring perhaps is here. The meeting's short, things are pretty good. Normally, well, always, we start with public comment. We have no one signed up. For the first time in some time, actually, this morning, so we'll move right to our consent calendar. Commissioner Mill?
All right. If I don't break the microphone here. I think I did. Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the consent calendar. And included this morning in the Health Department is to approve Amendment Number 11 to receive $197,159 from the Oregon Health Authority for the financing of community addictions and mental health services through June 30, 2015. And Public Works, approve an ongoing intergovernmental agreement with the City of Woodburn for coordination and issuance of building permits and inspection.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar that we just read. Any further discussion? Don't hear any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. We have some special people this morning. Our one action item is to consider approval of a resolution in support of the Pringle Square redevelopment project tax exemption. We have Chuck Bennett, Mayor Anna Peterson, one I don't know, and probably Shad and Doug Rucks, but who's ever coming up. If you'd go ahead and tell us what you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Doug Rucks, the Assistant Director for the Urban Development Department for the City of Salem. What I'd like to do is kind of cue this up about what is occurring down at the Pringle Square development on the former Boise site. And then Mr. Dame Ron, Clint Dame Ron is our Real Property Services Manager. He's going to walk through the multiple-unit housing tax incentive program. And then Mayor Peterson and Council President Bennett to make some comments. On January 27th of 2014, the Salem City Council was presented a purchase and sale agreement for their consideration. This document had some conditions associated with it. What it did is establish that the city has an interest in purchasing 3.8 acres of land adjacent to Riverfront Park west of the railroad tracks on the former Boise Cascade site. As part of that purchase, the city had a condition that we need to get a purchase and sale, what's called a PPA, Perspective Purchasers Agreement from DEQ. And we are currently in the process of working with DEQ on that. The developer of the former Boise site, called Pringle Square, had several conditions in this purchase and sale agreement as well. One of those was the multiple-unit housing tax incentive program that we have before you today, seeking your support. A second component of it was what's called a project bond for a development that's going to occur on the north block of this project for a post-acute care rehabilitation facility. The next element in that document was a binding agreement between the city and the developer for pedestrian improvements along Pringle Creek. So that's the construct that the council looked at on January 27th. They did pass by resolution that purchase and sale agreement, as well as they adopted two resolutions relating to the multiple-unit housing tax improvement program. So what I'd like to do is turn this over to Mr. Dame Ron and let him walk through what that program is.
Good morning. Clint Dame Ron with the Urban Development Department of the City of Salem. I'm here to give you a brief presentation on the Multiple Unit Housing Tax Incentive Program, or the Mootip, as we call it for short. As Doug mentioned, this is a program that the city has, which is authorized by both ORS and the Salem Revised Code. And the general purpose of it is to stimulate the construction of transit-supportive multiple-unit housing in the core areas of Oregon's urban centers. The program is basically an exemption of property taxes up to 10 consecutive years. And when the city acts on it, it is exempting only its portion of the property tax levy, which in this case is roughly about 34% of the total levy. And it is related to only the residential and related improvements of a project only. It does not abate the land taxes, does not abate any commercial space taxes inside a project. For a project to receive full exemption, it would require approval of 51% of the taxing districts representing 51% of the total levy. In most cases, in all cases in the past, it has been done in coordination with the city plus Salem Kaiser School District, which gives them the necessary voting levy to pass the full abatement. What are some of the basic program requirements? It must include at least two dwelling units. It must be located within the defined core area. And it must include at least one of 19 listed public benefits. And the project must be completed by January 1, 2022. How have we got, where have we gotten to date? On January 27th, as Doug mentioned, the Salem City Council unanimously passed resolutions approving both phases of the Pringle Square's apartments, participation in the Mootip. There are two phases to this project, 115 units and 60 units. The reason for the double resolution is that they don't want to lose two years with the timing, so it needs to be two different resolutions, so the assessor's office can peg it to those two different dates. On February 11th, the school district had their reading, first reading of their proposed resolution. And upcoming on March 18th, they're scheduled to make a decision on their support of both of the resolution as well. Here you can see the site. This is the former warehouse of the Boise factory, south of Pringle Creek, right on Commercial Street. The proposed development, as I said, is reusing the foundation of the existing warehouse. If you've driven by lately, the top floor has been totally taken off. And they will build four floors of apartments on top of that existing foundation. Phase one will include 115 apartments, that's the dark yellow you see there, and 2,800 square feet of retail and 12,200 square feet of office. Phase two to follow, within two years is the estimated time, of 60 additional apartments. They are underway with their demolition work on the phase one work. And they hope to start phase two in spring of 2016. And both phases should take 12 to 18 months to complete. Here you see a master plan, which Doug was speaking to. Part of the overall picture, in addition to the apartments on the left of the picture, is the city's acquisition of the land west of the railroad tracks for addition of Riverfront Park. And then the post-acute rehab center, which is the long skinny building you see next to the railroad tracks. And then a proposed office building at the corner of Commercial and Front Streets. To show you the financial impact, this is a very simplified version of what would happen. Now, the odd thing about this thing is, this project is already in an urban renewal area, so all the tax increment would go to the urban renewal district, not the county. The county's not giving up anything at this point, nor is the city, because it's all going to the urban renewal district. If this was not in an urban renewal district, the financial impact to the county would be $31,000 a year for phase one and $14,600 for phase two, per year for 10 years. To translate that into all districts, it's $205,000 for phase one, $95,000 for phase two. Now, after the exemption runs its course, the money that will be going to the urban renewal area is an additional about $54,000. The county would be, in essence, giving to the, the project is giving to the URA, and $25,000 for the second phase. For all districts, you're looking at about just over $500,000 kicking into the coffers for the project once it's past its Mootip expiration. Just to show you what it's paying now, only the south block with the apartment, with the foundation on it, that currently kicks in about $25,700 a year in property taxes. To sum up, the applications under consideration do meet all the requirements of the Mootip. They have at least two dwelling units, there's 175. It is located within the core area. And they meet nine of the 19 public benefits required in the ORS. And it will be complete by January 1, 2022. Their projected completion dates are 2015 and 2017. And with that, this is a rendering of the proposed apartments. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't know who this is for. I just have one, and I'm not trying to discredit the project at all. But you talk here about the connection with transit yet. I really don't see anything that highlights that, so maybe you or someone can explain what transit will do, and also that they're happy with the plan.
The proposed development is adjacent to Commercial Street. Right across Commercial Street, between the city offices and the library, there's a transit stop that's located there. So you're actually looking at the design of the development. You would go, walk slightly down Commercial Street South, you would cross at Bellevue Street, and right across the street, then you are at the transit stop. So that's very close proximity. In addition, there's transit available going on Liberty Street going north into downtown. So you walk across Peace Plaza, and you can get to the transit bus service at that location. In addition, is that, given this proximity of this project, they also are only about four blocks away from the Transit Mall itself. So residents could walk that short quarter-mile walking distance down to High Street, be able to get to the Transit Mall to get onto the bus service as well. So part of this program is having that connection and proximity to transit. And we believe in their application, they identified those three primary locations where they have access.
So no new facilities, but you're talking about higher usage of what's there?
Yes.
Great. Anything else?
Just, as you were talking about the locations of current transit, so it's proximity to it versus creating new access?
Correct. And so what you have is roughly, you have about 300 residents that will build out of this project that have the ability to access existing transit that's already there. This is not about building new transit facilities.
Yeah, okay. And it's acceptable, to whomever it has to be acceptable to, that it's, the proximity is an acceptable distance, it's not too far away?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Oh, there is one.
I do, yeah. Well, just a question about, we took, first of all, thank you for coming. Second of all, we had a discussion on Monday at Management Update, and I had a lot of questions there and got them all answered. But just to ask a question here, that kind of tag on to what we were talking about on Monday. So I understand the entrance, there's an entrance and in and off off of Front Street, and then an in on the Commercial Street, and then behind on Bellevue, there's a in and out for the apartments, right? So in terms of, you know, there's all this controversy about having to cross the railroad tracks, so that doesn't do that anymore, so that's not through the carousel. In terms of the flow of traffic on Front Street, because that, I mean, it is kind of a congested and, and, you know, people drive kind of quickly around that corner, and Commercial also. So you've done traffic impact studies, and you're not concerned that those ins and outs are going to cause any difficulties?
The traffic impact, there was a traffic impact study that was done for this particular development. And at this time, there's not identified any, any issues associated with that. So you are correct, Commissioner, there is a right-in, right-out off of Front Street onto the north block. That's for the post-acute care and the office building. There is a right-in driveway only off of Commercial Street into that north block. Into the south block, there's a right-in going into the parking garage. There's two levels of parking underneath the building. And then there's an access on Bellevue Street. As they go through the land use process for the post-acute care and the office building, we will relook at that and look at the transportation again to see if there's any type of mitigation that would be necessary.
Okay. Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I'm Anna Peterson, Mayor of the City of Salem. And I appreciate so much this time to be able to come and to address you regarding a very important and very exciting project that the City of Salem has been working on with Mountain West Real Estate Investment. I'm here today to seek your support for the City Council's unanimous decision to assist in the redevelopment of the former Boise Cascade industrial site. The first step in the endeavor is to approve the multi-unit housing tax credit. And our City Council considered this question and unanimously approved the extension of the tax credit on January 27th. The City Council knows that this project is a major game changer for downtown, and really for all of the Riverfront area and for housing across the city, because multi-unit housing is needed in Salem. And the addition of 115 units initially, and the other units in phase two, will significantly provide more housing at market rate for individuals, couples, families. I want to stress that there's no direct cost to Marion County for supporting this tax abatement. And when the tax abatement is provided, there will be no loss to Marion County as a result of that. The redevelopment of this site, the extension of the utility improvements, the expansion of Riverfront Park, are all things that are vitally needed and won't happen without approval from the other taxing districts. So today, we sincerely appreciate your support, if you will provide that, so that this project can go forward and become a reality. Thank you very much.
Councilor Bennett?
Thank you. My name is Chuck Bennett. I'm president of the Salem City Council. Development of the south block apartments will result, we believe, in substantial benefits to the local economy. The addition of 175 units at buildout is going to add 300 new residents to downtown. The development of a long vacant site and adaptive reuse of a dilapidated structure that is situated along a key gateway in our city is a critical development in our downtown core. In addition, we get a 3.8-acre expansion of Riverfront Park, new pedestrian connections to Riverfront Park, and the new Minto Island Bridge and Trail along Pringle Creek, which will be part of this overall development project between the city and Pringle, Pringle Square LLC.
Pringle Square.
Yeah.
There we go.
Construction of the apartments will spur $42 million in economic activity, support 10-point time, $9 million in labor income, and 252 construction jobs. It will spur planned construction of 40,000 square feet of commercial office space on the north block. It will advance planned construction of 38,000 square feet of a post-acute rehab center on the north block, with $17.7 million in economic activity, 9.1 million in labor income, and 256 construction jobs. We believe it will result in a stimulation of the overall private sector investment valued at $60 million for both the south and north development, or block development. The new pedestrian connections to Riverfront Park, which are part of this project running through the site, will connect to the Minto Island Bridge and Trail along Pringle Creek. It will connect the downtown to more than 1,400 acres of parks and 30 miles of off-street trails, providing a significant amenity for residents in downtown, employers and visitors. We believe this is just a cornerstone of downtown redevelopment. And without it, it is a lag on downtown redevelopment. This is a site that just has to be brought up to livable standards. We're very excited about the project. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Go ahead.
Well, thank you both for being here this morning and for bringing this forward. And again, we did have the opportunity to have the discussion on Monday about this. And thank you, Chuck, for laying out all of the economic opportunities that we have with this. And I said this on Monday, I'll just say it again here, this was such a victory for the City of Salem, to be able to pull all of this together. I know when, I mean, I've watched from afar the controversy over the prior plan, and then was extremely saddened when everything kind of fell apart. And of course, I visit my mother over at Orchard Heights four times a week, and so I'm coming across the bridge and down Front Street when I come back out to South Salem. So I see it, you know, like every day, and it's, you know, it's not beautiful right now in its present state. And it did sit for a number of years with the economy, you know, the problems that we've had. And so now to know that it's going to actually be developed, that it's going to have housing, office space, the, what is, what is the place called?
Cute Care.
Cute Care, right, thank you. I was trying to think of the word for the clinic. So all of that's just going to be such, such an opportunity. It will make something that right now is really an eyesore into something that is a beautiful contribution to the City of Salem. And Parkland in addition, which is really a wonderful thing and something that's, that's needed. So hats off to you. Congratulations, and just thank you for the work that you and your staff did to make this a reality.
Thank you. We're, we're very pleased. This, the city and the developer, I think, have gone at this very seriously. There are always competing interests, and I think we found absolutely the perfect compromise that both meets the needs of the developer and meets the needs of the citizens of Salem who so love that Riverfront Park and wanted to see it enlarged. So this was, we're very pleased. And of course, the couple of months between initial discussion and final outcome are just, as you know, the complications of this kind of large project.
Yes, this, this project truly is a significant project, and I believe is a signature example of the collaboration capital at its best. And I think that's why the community so quickly embraced the plan that you see before you, because it does meet the needs and the desires and the heartfelt longing for the community to expand Riverfront Park, and also certainly to the rest of the community to bring an economic engine right into the downtown. And that's really what Pringle Square will do. I do compliment the Mountain West, Larry and Jason Takarsky, for their perseverance in the face of opposition, their perseverance in the face of challenges. And I'm very pleased with the collaboration that has occurred between them and the city and me and, and the council. And look forward to a project that I think we can all take real pride in. And when I say collaboration, it really does require, and I'm happy it does, requires the collaboration and the support of the other taxing districts. And that's why we're here today, to ask you for, for your support, and to reinforce to you how vitally important your support will be for this. Even though you will not suffer any sort of a financial detriment, having your support is a significant part of our being the collaboration capital. Thank you.
Thank you. I do, I wanted to back up, Councilor Bennett, you, you said 60, what I wrote down anyway, I want to verify, $60 million in a private investment? And I, I note in the letter, economic impact of 11, 11.6 million annually, I don't know over what period of time, I think that goes back, perhaps talking about the construction period of time, a total there. I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly, 60 million?
Yeah, $60 million worth of private investment total in both the north and south blocks. It is really a significant project. We're very, you know, obviously, we're excited. We hope everyone else is. But this is the kind of investment that highlights how vital downtown Salem is and the real opportunities here. We have other sites at the McMahon site, the old Wells Fargo. We think this is the kind of, of event that boomerangs on and results in a lot of other activity. This is a real statement by these developers in their faith in downtown and in our ability to, to deal with these kinds of challenges.
Yeah. Well, what I wanted to tag on then, to making certain I heard you correctly, because that is an enormous private investment, which, as, as both of you were saying and was shared previously, the private local people feeling this strongly about improving the community, that doesn't happen very often. And I do believe in my mind, too, when this particular site, when the construction begins, it will bring excitement and encouragement for those other sites that are needing some attention. It becomes contagious.
We hope so.
And again, I just want to emphasize, when, when local community members are willing to put that much at stake and have used the person, that was the word I always think of, too, the perseverance that they've demonstrated to make this work. And I, as we know with government, there are a lot of hoops to jump through and a lot of boxes that have to be checked, and many of them don't seem to follow much common sense, but you have to do it, and they did it. And so this collaboration and cooperation is a very good example of what can follow. So exciting, so I will definitely be supporting this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple things, if I could. I was just developing a list of all the good economic reasons for doing this activity downtown. I should have anticipated, Chuck, that you'd deliver it, and you covered it very well. And thanks for highlighting all that. I have a, just a one thought, that I like, oh, two things really, but that I like about this plan. The previous ones had trouble with the railroad. This just takes it all out of play. I'm not quite sure if cars go under to reach that south portion. I know that the trails are, along the creek, go underneath the railroad, so out of play, and then really opens things up. And then as an old garbage man recycler, I didn't catch the part about, you know, using the old foundation, and I just love those kind of things. You don't dig it up, you don't store it somewhere, try to find a use, you just do it right in place and build on to it. And that's creative. I appreciate that. So, sounds like we're all pretty happy?
Yes.
Very supportive.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the Board of Commissioners approve a resolution that declares Marion County's support of the City of Salem's policy decision to include both phases of the Pringle Square South Block project in the city's multi-unit housing tax incentive program, and authorize the chair to sign a letter to transmit our support to the City of Salem.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's moved and seconded to approve the resolution in support of the Pringle Square redevelopment, and authorize the signing of a letter attesting to that. Any further discussion? Now, call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Again, thank you all for coming, and thanks for all this creative, hard work.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Well, no public hearings. The only thing left to do then is to read the places we'll be together in the coming week. At 11:30 to 1:30 today, we have the Woodburn Foreign Lunch, Marion County State of the County Presentation. That'll be at the Woodlands, 1475 Monhood Avenue in Woodburn. Then at 3:30 to 5:00 today, Economic Development Advisory Board and the Chamacca Center for Business and Industry, the Job Growers Boardroom, third floor, 626 High Street in Salem. And another State of the County Presentation this evening in Mill City, 6 o'clock to 7 is when it's scheduled, in the City of Mill City Hall, Council Meeting Room 441 South First in Mill City. Tomorrow, 7:30 to 9:00, Kaiser Marion County Meeting, Sherry's Restaurant, 4998 River Road in Kaiser. And that'll be followed by a executive session at 9:00 to 9:30. And this will be pursuant to ORS 1926602A and B, Columbia River Conference Room, 451 Division Street, Northeast in Salem. Friday, 1:30 to 3:30, the Council of Economic Advisers Meeting, Commissioners Boardroom, that's this room, 1115 Commercial Street, Northeast in Salem. Monday, 9 o'clock to 11:00, Management Update, Columbia and Sandy Am Conference Room, 451 Division Street in Salem. And then next Wednesday at 9:00, our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. So I think that covers everything we have to. Is there anything we don't have to cover?
Well, you read it, but we have two State of the County addresses today, so that's going to be fun.
So are you going to change things up? Can I expect different things in one crowd than another?
I'm going to go longer, so that you have no time at all.
You know, a lot of times that'd bother me, but maybe today that's just right.
Actually, I'm not.
I'm going to switch it up a little bit, I think, just to confuse myself and them.
Switch what? What you're saying?
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Because, because there are things that, you know, from community to community, that things that we've worked on and that are important, so.
I think I can tell you, probably, just following that, and that's exactly what I was thinking, Woodburn, I think with the Asheville there, should be quite interested in what's happening there, a little more of the garbage stuff. Woodburn Interchange, a little mention, and I think that's probably the highlight of it, that's particular to Woodburn. Mill City, I'll have to make up, oh, they should be interested in some talk about Detroit Lake and water issues. I, I think we did State of County three weeks ago, seems like it, our first one was Sedcor, and there I was kind of worried about drought and everything. Seems like every time I bring it up, we have a flood, but we're still at like 59 percent of normal, so, and other areas of the state are worse. I, I was down in Southern Oregon in January, and I shouldn't say I laughed, but I kind of incredulous, they were talking about having, having forest fires in Josephine and Jackson Counties in January. I said, "How's that possible?" Then I get home and find out we've got two in Marion County, so it's a little, little indication of what things might be like in August, so something that we have to watch. And of course, the water problem in Detroit is why I thought of that. So, yeah.
Always, yeah, the water in Detroit is always of concern, and even though we've had this rain, it's really based on what the snowpack is.
That's right.
And, and the snowpack this year, excuse me, has not been, been to a level that gives anybody any confidence in, in what's going to happen. And then Detroit Lake being a reservoir, but also, when you look at the list of priorities, unfortunately Detroit Lake is not at the top, and of course, for the people up the canyon, it's the recreational tourism that's, they rely on that for their livelihood and, and the little bit of money that can keep things going up there. So if the tourism is affected in any way, it greatly affects what happens in their communities. So it's been since way back early 2000s, when that big drought happened, and went up there and had this huge, huge meeting, filled what used to be the old, old gymnas, yeah, the old gymnasium in the school, and there had never been such a filled gymnasium, and decided that the community people needed to take the lead on a number of issues, which has been, been the effect of that. There are many, many great efforts, a lot of projects have been completed over the years that address what they can do locally, but we, once again, this sewer issue, it just brings a lot of good, positive development to a screeching halt, because you have to, we have to find a way to make that happen, and those discussions are taking place. But still, having that lake filled to where, the level it needs to be to have the boaters and the, just people who want to enjoy the lake, and of course, we have our new campsite now at Overnight Camping Facility available, but life is still extremely tenuous up at the, up the canyon, and we need to do everything we can to keep, keep them afloat, pardon the pun, when we're talking about the lake, but that's what it boils down to.
I know we're talking about switching things up, and perhaps, I know you go before me, but I think you ought to mention some stuff and how it's gone in the past and what we've done, and then if there's anything left, I'll follow up. See how we strategize? It's all organized, synchronized, synchronized swimming up in Detroit. That'll, that'll bring the crowd. Yeah, you think singing was bad.
Upstream, right.
All right, anything else this morning? All right, let's call the meeting adjourned.